Everybody and welcome to the special meeting this Monday evening, January 18th of the city council. This is a study session. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols, I do not see in the room yet. Commit Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
And Deputy Mayor Pappen will be a few minutes late. And Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you very much. I'm here. Good. Then I will be reading the health order. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature to zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So we're on to the business tonight, study session. Item number one is a density bonus concessions and residential densities and mixed use projects policy discussion. So may we get started? I believe you have a presentation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and honorable council members. I'm Manera Santhi, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. I am sharing my screen. I just want to confirm that you're able to see the cover page of the slideshow.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's get started. So first of all, I'd just like to start with some background on this item before you tonight. So in recent reviews of pre-application projects, staff has been receiving direction from the Planning Commission regarding how to improve jobs housing balance in the city by providing more housing. In addition to that, on November 1st, the city council also requested additional information on housing projects and height concessions related to state density bonus laws, as well as residential projects when they are proposed as part of mixed use development. So tonight's study session, based on that guidance and direction, is focused on two parts. The first part, we'll be discussing height concessions under the state density bonus law, and specifically focused on some questions around whether or not the city should establish a standardized process for considering and granting concessions to exceed height limits, and also whether or not we should evaluate additional density bonuses and/or concessions to incentivize the production of more affordable housing. In part two of tonight's study session, we'll be focused on residential densities in mixed use projects, and specifically whether we should look at establishing a minimum density for mixed use projects when they incorporate a residential component, and then also how we can incentivize mixed use projects to provide more affordable housing. So we'll start with some regulatory and existing context around the density bonus and height requirements in the city. So as you're all aware, the state has several density bonus provisions that are outlined in government code sections listed here. Specifically, when a developer proposes affordable housing units, they have the option to exceed the maximum density requirements that a local jurisdiction may cap those projects at. The developer can also request concessions and waivers that allow relief from local codes and requirements. And typically concessions can range from one to four concessions, depending on the percentage of affordability and the number of affordable units, provided the developer can show reasonable documentation that these concessions result in a cost reduction that allows for the development of the affordable units. And then in addition, developers can also seek waivers, and these can be unlimited number from development standards that a city can impose on a project that could physically preclude project construction. So with this in mind, the city also has the state provisions outlined in our municipal code. So in the zoning ordinance in chapter 27.5, we lay out the process of how applicants can seek these density bonus provisions and allow for more affordable units, as well as higher densities and concessions and waivers. And then in addition to that, the city also has limitations under the water-approved measure Y requirements. So the city caps density at a maximum of 50 units per acre in certain areas. We have a height requirement of up to 55 feet in certain areas. But there is a caveat to that, as our general plan and the measure Y requirements do allow for exceeding above the 55-foot height limitation in certain areas when developers propose certain amenities. And that can be done via the city's interim community benefits program. So that is certainly an option that is available to developers in order to exceed the height limits. In terms of the projects that have been proposed in the city, we frequently observe developers using the density bonus to achieve more number of units, or to get waivers and concessions from certain city requirements. However, more recently, what we've observed is that developers are relying more on these density bonus concessions to exceed height limits, instead of providing the amenities that are outlined in our general plan and measure Y requirements by providing community benefits. This, you know, could potentially create an issue with developers possibly layering community benefits, as well as density bonus provisions, to further exceed the height limits that are outlined in measure Y and in the city's ordinances. So with that background and context in mind, the staff is seeking direction from the council tonight on whether or not the city should establish a policy that standardizes the process and criteria for considering and granting height limit concessions. And in addition, the staff is hoping for direction on whether we should look at this as an opportunity to consolidate the interim community benefits program with the density bonus requirements to provide a menu of options for the developers, which can include additional concessions. So for example, if the developer goes above and beyond the minimum state requirements, would the city, would the council like to provide a higher number of concessions, or perhaps even fast-tracking certain types of affordable housing projects? So moving on to the second part of tonight's study session, which is an interrelated topic, is the mixed use and residential densities component. So I'll provide some brief context on this topic as well before we go into the discussion questions. As the council is aware, the city does have policies in our housing element and general plan that promotes mixed use development. We have city zoning designations, as well as residential overlays in our codes that allow for such projects to materialize. In fact, since 2005, we've observed that a lot of these projects in these areas and in these zones have incorporated residential units, either as standalone residential projects or as mixed use projects, and they've averaged densities of 48 units per acre. However, the city does not currently have a minimum density requirement or percentage of floor area requirement for residential component in a mixed use. So if a developer wants to propose 100,000-square-foot office development and say, six units, maybe a 10,000 square feet, that still counts as a mixed use project under the current requirements. In terms of the regulatory and policy front, the city is in the process of updating the general plan and the housing element. We foresee these updates being completed by the end of 2022, 2023. And there are provisions in the state housing element laws that state that very low and low-income housing opportunity sites for housing element updates, in terms of showing that we have the regional housing needs allocation capacity, can only be counted on mixed use sites when those sites allow for 100% residential uses and require that 50% of that development in terms of its square footage is a residential use. So those are certainly provisions that are in the state law. So with that as background, the discussion questions before the council tonight are focused on whether or not the city should look to establish a minimum density or percentage of floor area for mixed use projects when there's a residential component associated with it. And then also, should we, if yes, should we conduct this effort in advance of adoption of the city's housing element updated, or as an implementation item following adoption? We do feel that any such effort would require us to go before the development community to understand the ramifications of such a requirement. So we would like to factor in some time for doing that kind of outreach and additional analysis as well. In terms of next steps, there is a joint city council and planning commission housing element study session that will be done on February 7. So should this topic require some further discussion, we can certainly tee up more information that can be presented at that joint study session. Related to housing projects and streamlining housing projects, the Community Development Department has also been following up on other efforts based on city council, planning commission, as well as the developer input. So at this point, we're looking to streamline our pre-application review process. We have a study session going forward to the Planning Commission this month on that effort. We are also doing some code amendments to allow for minor public projects and minor modifications for approved projects to be done as an administrative review. CDD is also updating its website, you know, our handouts, checklist materials and procedures. And once we have that, we'll certainly do outreach with the development community so that we can, again, make that available to developers. And then also evaluating options to fast-track permitting for ADUs, as well as affordable housing projects, again, to further housing development and production in the city. So this concludes staff's presentation, and I have here tonight with me Deputy Director Zach Dahl, and we are happy to take any questions. I also have a slide that can tee up the discussion questions for you, so I can pull it up whenever the council is ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Let me bring it back to the council for any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First off, I thought that was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. You talked about the potential for layering benefits. Can you talk a little bit more about that and how that would work?
So, happy to speak to that, Councilmember Rodriguez. So what we have considered is that developers can apply for and obtain height concessions through the density bonus program, but then also apply for or provide amenities in order to exceed height limitations under measure Y. So we haven't yet come across such a project yet, but it is possible that a developer could provide amenities and gain that height concession first under the community benefits program, and then potentially also then seek additional density bonus to go above, I believe, at 75 feet, which is, you know, capped under measure Y if they apply for density bonus. So that is one possibility. We haven't yet seen such a project come forward, so I'm not sure how that would occur, but it is something that could be reasonably foreseeable, just given how those two interact with each other.
Thank you. And I have a question about your discussion questions. Could you maybe pull up your slide just for a second? The number four, when it says if it should be initiated before the city's housing element, well, I haven't made up my mind officially, but I'm leaning towards that we should establish a minimum density. Can you talk a little bit about the pros and cons of doing it now versus waiting? Especially, do we feel like this is going to affect, one, a number of projects that are already in the pipeline? And on the other side, is it gonna, how would it affect the timeline of the housing element and your staff if we were to kind of rush it to put it in front? Just trying to weigh the pros and cons.
Yes, thank you. Happy to do that. I don't know if we've completely thought them out, but there are certainly, you know, benefits and challenges associated with doing it first versus later. So in terms of the timing, so it doesn't affect the housing element implementation timeline or adoption timeline. Councilmember Rodriguez, they are on two separate paths. However, it could affect, you know, what kind of sites should be designated as mixed use sites. We'd have to do some mapping and additional analysis, look at some best practices out there, do some outreach with the development community to understand if, you know, there are any unintended consequences. Like, could this requirement, if set too high, be a barrier to any development in the city? So those are some of the things that we would have to evaluate. And as you know, those things take time. We have a pretty full work plan for the first half of 2022 and possibly the second half of 2022 as well. So we would probably have to look at our work plan to see which other priorities may have to be moved to the back burner to accommodate this effort. In terms of the number of units, I don't know if it would make a huge difference if we were to implement this in advance of the housing element, because while we have a few projects that are mixed use, my understanding is that many of them already include a housing component. I can only think of one that does not have a significant amount of housing units proposed as a mixed use project, but most of the others do include housing as part of their proposals. And even if we were to move forward with it now, given the 69-month timeline that it would take for something like this, if the developer really wanted to avoid this new requirement, they could potentially apply before the ordinance went into effect. So those are some of the, you know, things to weigh as you consider the timing of this effort.
Excellent answer. Thank you so much. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So back to the timeline, because I think it's a really important point for us to consider, because we want to be sensitive to staff capacity. But if we were to fold this into the housing element, my understanding is that our timeline for adoption is like around December of this year or January 2023. And then we are being given sort of a grace period to rezone, which could span 12 to 36 months. And so the alternative, you know, of waiting for this to go through the housing element could actually be longer than three years. Is that a fair, am I portraying the timeline correctly? Because the difference between implementing this, you know, potentially within 2022 versus waiting for us to adopt the housing element in 2023, and then having an additional potentially three years to actually rezone, we're looking at, you know, a much longer multi-year window span. So I just want to make sure that I have that information clear and I'm portraying the alternative timelines correctly.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lee. I believe that is correct. Once a housing element is adopted, the state does give us three years to implement any kind of rezoning or requirements that we need to establish. However, this could be a priority at, you know, council direction that could be done sooner. So if it's not 2022, perhaps it's a priority for 2023. So it could be completed next year instead of this year. It's not a, the state does not require that we have to wait the full three years.
Sure. And I just wanted to make sure I'm also understanding the point about to be included in our RENA inventory. Was it, it's the case that it needs to either be mixed use zone for 100% affordable or 50% floor area?
Yes, so that is a requirement. If, as part of the housing element opportunity sites, we identify that the very low income and low-income units have to be accommodated on mixed use zone sites, then those mixed use zone sites do have to allow for 100% residential projects, which we already do, and require that any mixed use projects be 50% residential in terms of floor area. So that second requirement is something that we do not currently have, but that is an option only if the city wants to allow for the, or wants to count those units, the very low and low-income units as part of its RENA in those zones.
Okay. So I mean, there's, so just to kind of like stay on that, on that thought process. So if we were to try to develop a policy that could help help open up a pipeline to, you know, the deeper levels of affordability that we're trying to achieve, where, you know, we know in previous cycles, we have missed the mark significantly, right? That incorporating this 50% FAR or floor area for mixed use would accomplish, number one, we would be able to count it on RENA, and then number two, we would be zoning for it.
Yes, that is my understanding as well, Councilmember Lee. I do want to see if we have our housing manager, perhaps Sandy, Sandra Council, could speak to that a little bit more?
Yes, oh, sorry. I think. Yes, Manera explained it correctly. Amo, you're correct. We would want to, so that we could get full credit for the low and very low units. We are relying heavily on the mixed use sites, not entirely, so it wouldn't be every single site. We'd have to do the math to figure out what the threshold is for compliance, but we would want to have that minimum requirement. And back to your earlier point about the timing, whether the city wants to do it now or include it in the housing element, I think either way, it's going to go into the housing element as a work program. It's just the timing that the city wants to put on it is totally up to us.
Okay, that's really helpful. And then I guess just in terms of the, it would help me to have a little bit clearer understanding about sort of the, what's the difference between number one, the question, discussion question number one, and discussion question number two? Because I thought we were talking about the benefit of consolidating community benefits with the density program, but you're saying that that's a separate topic than considering the height concessions?
Yes, happy to clarify further, Councilmember Lee. So the first one is focused on density bonus law. So typically, when somebody, when a developer seeks height concessions under the density bonus provisions, they are required to provide reasonable documentation on how that height exceedance achieves the cost reduction in order to build that unit. Previously, I mean, this is a change in state law. So previously, state requirements allowed for a financial breakdown of, you know, what that cost would be, even performers, performa on these projects. But now that has been removed, and the only thing the city can ask for is reasonable documentation. So if there is, you know, certain guidance that the city has on when we should consider height concessions to create sort of a standard and consistent process, that might be helpful for developers as well as for staff to see how they are applied. And in terms of the second question, that's more focused on just creating a program that consolidates the community benefits and density bonus programs, and then perhaps, you know, as a question to the council, like, what kind of options would you like to see us incorporate so that developers have more choices? Like, would you like to see the threshold for a residential development lowered, or additional concessions being offered if a certain type of housing is proposed, or fast-tracking, you know, certain types of affordable housing projects if the developer is going above and beyond the minimum state requirements? So that's what the second question is focused on.
Okay. And so then in terms of like the, you know, what we're talking about with what options should be considered for height concessions, that was leading down the path of like, of community benefits.
Right. And certainly, yes, and, you know, we can, I mean, we can take one and two together, and if you have feedback for us, we can craft a program that addresses those comments.
Okay, so they can't, okay, all right. I wasn't, thank you for explaining that. I mean, it was just sort of like a sentence structure thing. All right, those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Any other council members have questions? I think that hearing none, I will then go to public comment. I don't have any questions myself right now. Let's go to public comment, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I have our first speaker is Seema Patel.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. I want to note that I do serve on San Mateo's Planning Commission, but my comments tonight are my own as a private citizen of San Mateo. I just wanted to note that in terms of minimum housing densities, we are seeing other cities in the region enact those. For example, Mountain View passed a precise plan for their East Wisman District that allows for the development of more office space, but requires that three units of housing be built for every thousand square feet of office, which is very close to the Building Industry Association's healthy jobs-to-housing ratio of 1.5 to 1. And it's working. They give developers the option to trade with each other or to dedicate land so that there's some flexibility in how they comply. And a lot of development is happening in the area. It doesn't seem to be detrimental. So we could consider doing something like that. I think there's value in matching what other cities are doing so that we're kind of creating an even playing field and evenly incentivizing development throughout the region. In terms of timing, I wanted to echo what Councilmember Lee said and say that waiting to do this as part of the housing element could potentially push this as far as three years down the road. And we're already seeing fairly unbalanced projects come to downtown San Mateo, as extreme as 53 jobs to every unit of housing being built. So I think there could be some value into working a little bit faster to ensure that our growth is balanced. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Kalisha Webster.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kalisha Webster. I'm a housing advocate for people with developmental and other disabilities with housing choices. We are a nonprofit serving people with developmental and other disabilities, with helping them find their housing, as well as to stay housed after they have moved in. I was calling in today to speak on behalf of people with disabilities, as well as other people who qualify as being extremely low income. City of San Mateo is one of the most expensive cities to live in the state. Turner Center recently released a report on the need for more extremely low-income housing to be developed throughout the Bay Area. Some of the key points made in the report are that the average extremely low-income household is living on less than $18,000 per year. Less than 20% of those renters receive a housing subsidy, and those that do not have access to this resource spend on average 76% of their income on housing. While examining ways to further incentivize housing development, the city should also consider ways to further incentivize deeper levels of affordability, such as additional incentives or waivers for developers targeting extremely low income, or the newly established acutely low-income housing units, most needed by people at risk of or experiencing homelessness. Without these units being developed, we will continue to see people becoming unhoused at a rate which outpaces those getting into emergency or permanent supportive housing. Thank you for your time and consideration. That was my comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other speakers with their hands raised. Oh, one more.
Oh, okay, good.
Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and members of the city council. I just wanted to mention a couple of concerns for density bonus concessions in the mixed use projects. I do feel that there would be increased parking and traffic demands if height and residential density exemptions are added to the proposed office projects for mixed use that go beyond measure Y requirements today. Now, there may be an instance where a developer may ask for concessions for absolutely no onsite parking and bypassing current onsite parking requirements. And we do not know if future developers will give Caltrans passes to office workers or residential tenants if more height is added beyond measure P and extreme densities are added. For example, Wendy Hill is the only developer that has mentioned so far in office projects. They're willing to give their office workers Caltrain passes and provide expenses for Uber after the Caltrain schedule. But other developers are not being as generous, and I think it would be helpful if developers would move in the direction of Wendy Hill. Now, Wendy Hill currently does not provide that type of Caltrain pass for residential tenants. You know, we really don't know if these workers and tenants will need parking and not take Caltrain. I mean, not everyone will take Caltrain. And in the instance of the East Bay, for example, if residential tenants in a new project, if they work in the East Bay, of course, they're going to be driving, and not everyone is going to be working on the peninsula. of course, they're going to be driving and not everyone is going to be working on the peninsula. Uh, also, do we know if there's enough current available parking in the public structures that we have in, in the downtown? If more office and residential tenants from future projects will be using the existing parking structures? There will also be a loss of street parking with more parklets being proposed. And do we have a calculation for additional parking needs in the structures and parking lots? Do we have an idea of the amount of, uh, monthly parking permits for downtown employees? And will this be compromised if developers are going to be using the current parking structures? If there is parking spillover to neighboring residential streets, it's a long and difficult process to get the RPPP, street cleaning signs in residential neighborhoods surrounding the downtown residents. And these are impacts that are cumulative with more density bonus concessions and adding more levels of parking. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, and I do have no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. In that case, I'll bring him back to the council for, uh, comments. Go ahead. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I would be interested in exploring these options. Can we put the slide back up?
Yes, I'll, I'll be happy to share.
Thank you so much.
Are you seeing it?
I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I mean, I think after we went through, it looks like one and two could kind of be sort of clumped together. Is that right? So, okay. So, yeah, I mean, I would be interested in exploring them. Um, I, I'm okay with an, an earlier timeline, if that helps you. Um, and I, I like the idea of seeing what kind of minimum density could work. Um, I, I don't know about Mountain Views, as one of the speakers had mentioned, but we could take a look at that. We'd have to kind of make sure it's feasible. I don't want to, I just want to be careful that uh, we, we go maybe in one direction that isn't feasible somehow or doesn't pencil, but it sounds like that's going to be a part of the process as we go forward to determine. So for me, uh, it's just, um, broadly speaking, I'm willing to explore this and explore it earlier, sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Todd. Can we have additional final comments?
I'll go next. Uh, so I, I agree with Diane. My answers would be yes, yes, yes. And, um, I think we can go on a parallel track sooner than the housing element. Um, I just think that existing law gives us flexibility to explore these things, so we should, we should move forward. Um, it will mean that the city receives uh, more housing than we otherwise would. And, and I've heard loud and clear from a lot of our residents, they, um, that these, they've seen plenty of office and they understand the housing shortage that we have. So these are the kinds of tools that we need to explore. So I, I agree.
All right, go next, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, my, um, my responses are, are pretty similar to the ones we've heard before. Um, uh, yes, uh, I do think that the, that the, we should have this discussion and I think it's going to be important to bring the entire community into that discussion. Uh, I also, uh, getting, jumping to three. Um, I, I also think that this is very important because one, uh, complaint I hear from residents all the time is that if, if we have such a housing shortage, why are we building so much office space? Uh, and then when we do have, uh, uh, an office development, mixed-use development, and we have this housing imbalance, and when, when the, the housing that's incorporated in that mixed-use development is, is woefully inadequate to be able to house the workers in that office space, then we're continuing to dig ourselves in a hole. But because it's mixed use, it's, it's kind of gets a pass. And I think that, um, it's time we kind of look at that more closely. And, um, and I, I also agree that we should probably be looking at this sooner rather than later because, uh, that it could mean, it could mean hundreds of different, uh, hundreds of more units. We don't, we don't know for sure, but this is, uh, that important. Uh, so those are my thoughts on this.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Um, it sounds like we are all in, um, agreement here. And, and I'll just add that, um, that for me, one of the most compelling reasons to fast-track this is that, um, is that we have a chance to, um, better align ourselves with, um, with the HTC guidelines that will get us deeper levels of affordability um, for the low and very low income brackets, uh, that we have yet to achieve. We know this is a pressing need in the community and now we have a chance to, to zone for that um, and have that actually be counted towards our, our, you know, arena goals. So I'm, I'm very excited about this. You know, we, we know that, um, the, the only way to get our, the full benefit of our inclusionary policy is to, is to control what the base density is. So if we, if we aren't keeping our eye on, uh, um, and creating, you know, reasonable standards to achieve those levels, the, you know, the density bonuses don't require any inclusionary. So we're not getting affordable housing through those density bonuses. So for me, focusing our policies, um, to make sure that the base densities are, um, are actually going to get us those fifteen percent, uh, affordable housing projects, then, or housing units, that is, that's where we start moving the needle. So I'm, I'm really, I'm really glad to see us, um, all in agreement, well, assuming, assuming Mr. Mayor is with us too, um, to fast-track this. And, um, and I, I also, uh, I wanted to echo Councilmember Goldil's point that if we think of this as a potential parallel track, um, to fold into the housing element, that we could, you know, we could leverage the learning that we're doing now and, um, and have our housing element pols, and policy goals, um, that much stronger um, when, when we are, you know, potentially in the future unrestricted by, um, current laws. So there's, there's, um, I think some good groundwork that can be achieved now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. So I'd like to, uh, comment that in general, I am in agreement with what I've been hearing here tonight from my fellow council members. Um, a couple of things I would like to add some accent to. One is, uh, we did hear something about what Mountain View is doing, which I think sounds very creative, and I would be interested in seeing if our staff could at least look into that and, uh, uh, examine whether, whether that presents an additional opportunity for us um, to look at ways to increase the amount of housing, uh, relative to, to the amount of office that, um, may be built in the future. Also, I want to say that, um, I think we should also look at AB twenty-three forty-five, which has been put in place and increases the top range of the density bonus to fifty percent for housing projects with fifteen. Anyway, let's look at this, okay? I think it act, actually makes, uh, uh, some great advantages for us. The last thing I want to talk about before we finish this is the public benefit. Um, I'm looking at our interim public benefits for development projects and I'm seeing that it's still kind of complicated. I think it could be done better and simpler if we looked at a way of actually just establishing set levels or thresholds uh, whereby if a project, uh, meets or exceeds a certain threshold, it contributes this much money to a public benefit fund, which the city could take then and decide on which projects would be most advantageous for the people rather than asking the developer to participate in that. It's not really their business. The city knows best what we want to participate for our residents. I think we should be able to take that funding and look for, uh, projects that would provide benefit to the public both at the project or in the vicinity of the project or in citywide benefits that would serve the public. So those are my thoughts on that, and I want to thank you all, uh, very much, um, for the presentation. And, uh, this is a study session, so there's no voting. Do you have additional comments, Councilwoman Lee?
Well, I, I guess I just had a question. Um, so I'm trying to unders, I, I, uh, just to follow up on, on your point. Um, I don't have a clear sense on how, how our interim policy is, is executable. Is it, is our community, is this menu of options, um, sort of like, um, pegged to uh, a quantifiable, um, dollar amount based on the project's, um, budget? Or how, how are we, um, you know, like, is, what is the mechanism right now to, to determine what level of community benefit, um, we're trying to extract out of each project? And, you know, because if, if that hasn't been established, then I think that the mayor's point is well-taken that that is probably another le- level of clarity that we can incorporate into this, um, this consolidation effort.
Yeah, Councilmember Lee, I, I can provide a quick, um, insight into that if, if you'd like. We haven't seen a project under the community, interim community benefits program yet. And I think what we've seen is that really developers are opting to use concessions under density bonus law in lieu of that. And so the opportunity would be to fold both of these together into one program to better utilize it and make it more accessible when projects come forward. So it could be, it could be more utilized because right now it does not appear that projects are looking at the interim community benefits program as, as a path, but are rather looking to density bonus because there's a more tangible and straightforward path to achieve a concession.
Exactly, which is why I suggested something that would bring some clarity and stability to allow developers to actually plan around, uh, uh, using the public benefit program that we could then use to provide those public benefits throughout the city for the public. Okay, thank you. Um, that said, I guess we're going to move on to the next part of this meeting, which will be the closed session. Um, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title for the closed session? And then I'll ask if there's anyone wishing to, uh, make any public comments, uh, prior to the closed session. And we'll move on to it and then we'll come back for a study session. Item two, no, I think the closed session, closed session is the study session.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the, uh, closed session item is a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on the, uh, closed session?
And, Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Very well, then I'll close the public comment period and we will be moving now to the closed session. Thank you all very much. We'll be back at seven PM for the regular City Council meeting.